Good evening, welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park. I'm Mayor Bianca Motley Broome. We have a full quorum present with councilmembers Clay, Karn, Allen, and Gay, so I'm calling the meeting to order at this time at 7:52 PM. The first item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our invocation is being handled by Chaplain Walker this evening.
Have a spray. Oh holy of holy, we appreciate who you are, what you are, who you will be, and to give thanks that we are one nation, under your presence, under your guidance, your love, and your protection of us. We give thee thanks, oh God, for our mayor and city councilman, as well as all of those persons who work tirelessly for our safety and our well-being. There's a special word of thanks in our hearts for our city manager, our police chief, our fire chief, our police force, and the firefighters report, and our first responders, as well as all of those who labor and are dedicated to keep us safe and as secure as possible. We notice them, we give thanks for them. They hold a special place in our hearts and in the government of College Park. Be aware that all of these have a flare of courage, a flare of hope, a flare of concern and a flare of inspiration, that as a community, we can be better. May our minds be focused, clear, as we work for the betterment of our city government and our city life. May we leave this place better people, more secure people, more honored people, more known people, so that our appreciation for all those who help us, we give you thanks. Assist us as we work, as we honor, and we go through this council meeting in the name of faith, hope, and love. Amen.
Amen. On to additions, deletions, and amendments to the agenda. Mr. Hawthorne?
Good evening, Mayor. I'm aware of at least one addition, but I will defer to a request from Councilman Gay over an appointment to the Planning and Zoning Board, so I'll leave it to Councilman Gay to introduce.
City Manager, that appointee is here, is there any way that she could be put early on the agenda?
I'm sorry, I couldn't understand you.
I said that appointee is here, can she be added early in the agenda?
This is for the Ward Four Planning and Zoning Board. It's the request from Councilman Gay, and I'll defer to the mayor.
I think the earliest we could do it would be 8A, would be other business if we bump everyone else down. Is that amendable, Councilman Gay?
It's pretty far down there, but we'll see what we can do.
We can put it wherever we want to put it now. We don't have to put it in other business.
We just want to be respectful to the people that come here and not have to wait all night.
Absolutely. Absolutely. It is its own header if that occurs. We can put it... Mr. Hawthorne, suggestions?
Well, Mayor, I would say that if we had scheduled the agenda with the item, that it probably would have fallen under consent agenda.
Okay, well, we can make it 7A then, and the remainder of the consent agenda would go to 7B. So 7A is the appointment of Ward Four representative to the Planning Committee, or, I'm sorry, Planning and Zoning, goodness, Planning Commission, thank you.
And City Manager, I would like to ask that the Peachtree Government be taken out of the consent agenda, please.
I have no issue with that, Mayor.
I'm sorry?
I have no issue with removing the lobbyist item from consent agenda.
Okay, so that goes, that goes to 8A then?
Does, does that mean it's removed totally, or just moved off the consent agenda, but will be on the regular agenda?
Correct.
Okay.
So 8A would be Peachtree Government Relations Contract. All the other items get shifted down accordingly. So the consent agenda would include, give me one moment, it would include the emergency replacement of the Rolling Steel Door at the GICC, approval of AV services at the GICC, and payment to Central Square Technologies for annual maintenance and technical services. Is there a motion?
And the Planning and Zoning, did you name the Planning and Zoning Board appointment?
I'm sorry?
Under consent agenda?
It is item 7A.
7A, okay.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Karn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? That motion passes unanimously. Item 3A is approval of minutes, we have a number of them to consider. The May 15th, 2023 Regular Session Minutes, is there a motion?
I'm moved to approve with some changes.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. And that was Councilman Clay making the motion, Councilman Allen seconding. Councilman Clay, go right ahead.
Okay, well, first of all, for benefit of those at home and here, there were 311 pages of minutes from seven different meetings that we had to go through. That's quite a bit of going through. I did get comments in on all of them, actually, and I got most of them inserted, but I have two that I want to bring up that I think need still to be fixed. And the first one is on packet page 148, and I'm going to have to go to that page, so bear with me while I get there and you get there. And, all right, packet page 148, the correction got made partially. It should be Pond Engineering on line 188, won't no longer need Pond, from my understanding, with a capital P, so the objection there is it's a capital P, and on line 199, it is also a capital P for Pond. Otherwise, it may not seem like a big deal, but it is the name of the company and not a pond. And then on packet page 171, so if we go to 171, let's see what we got there. Is that right? 171, 171, 171. Okay, packet page 171, line 1278, and Mr. LeGone, bare bones, not, we're not talking about the bare bones of a bear, like a grizzly, we're just talking about bare bones, meaning minimally, and that's on 1278, and that's also on 1280, and those are the only two changes I have.
Any other changes to the May 15th Regular Session Minutes? Hearing none, we'll move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those present have voted in favor, Councilman Gay has stepped out, so the motion passes. Moving on to the Workshop Session Minutes from May 15th, is there a motion?
Oh, I, I, I assume that that was everything, so we were doing them individually?
Oh, if the body wishes to do 3B through 3G as a package, is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All, all present voted in favor. All right, we get to the fun part, proclamations, resolutions, plaques, and announcements. The first one is in recognition of the College Park Favor Track Team. Whereas the City of College Park Recreation and Cultural Arts Department, College Park Favor Track Team had a successful spring track season, in which the season ran from February 2023 through May 2023, servicing over 130 youth during this season. And whereas the College Park Favor Track Team had 42 athletes qualify for the GRPA Class A State Track Meet held at Cross Creek High School on May 5th through 6th, 2023 in Augusta, Georgia, and whereas the College Park Favor Track Team had a total of twen, of three first-place state champions. Awardees to include Quintarius Gibson, Twyla Hill, and Monica Houston in Shot Put, my personal favorite, whereas, that Shot Put's my personal favorite. Whereas the College Park Favor Track Team had a total of 11 second-place state champions. Awardees include Skylar Scandrit in javelin, Amari Boyd in 200-meter, Quintarius Gibson in 100-meter, and Quintarius Gibson, Cornelius Jenkins Jr., Drevon Glass, and Joseph Pruitt in the 4x100-meter relay. Malakai LaRocque, Messiah LaRocque, Isaiah Sumter, and Asaya Green in 4x400-meter relay. And whereas the College Park Favor Track Team had a total of eight third-place state champions. Awardees include Troy Edwards, Mason Scott, Kenya Boyd, Shemarian Lisbon, Amari Boyd, Aboid, Amaya Boyd, Seven Price, and Kashari McGrady in the 4x100-meter relay. And whereas the College Park Favor Track Team was coached by Rex Willis. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park, Georgia, that the College Park Favor Track Team is recognized for their hard work, dedication, and their accomplement, accomplishments, at the GRPA Class A State Track Meet. Proclaim this fifth day of June 2023. Now, I have a feeling that about half the audience is here for this proclamation, and we would love for you to come on down, and for the parents, come on down too, so you can get a picture. Whereas the City of College Park supports the rights of every resident to experience equality and freedom from discrimination, and whereas all people, regardless of age, gender identity, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or disability, have the right to be treated on the basis of their value as human beings. And whereas the City of College Park accepts and welcomes people of all backgrounds, and believes a diverse population leads to a more vibrant community, and whereas the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer communities contribute to the cultural, civic, and economic successes of the city, and whereas society learns to embrace evolving definitions of sexuality and gender, we acknowledge how the need for education and awareness remains vital to end discrimination and prejudice, whereas Pride is a time to recall the trials of the LGBT community, LGBTQ community, has endured, and to rejoice in the triumphs of trailblazing individuals who have bravely fought and continue to fight for full equality. And whereas Pride is both a jubilant, communal celebration of visibility, and a personal celebration of self-worth and dignity. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Mayor and City Council of the City of College Park, Georgia, do hereby designate the month of June 2023 as LGBG, LGBTQ plus Pride. The City of College Park encourages residents to recognize the valuable contributions and achievements of the LGBTQ plus community, to reflect on the ongoing struggle for equality members of the community face, to reaffirm our commitment against discrimination and justice, and to wave pride flags high. Proclaim, proclaim this fifth day of June 2023. And I think that we've got some folks who are here to accept this proclamation. Want to introduce yourself?
My name is Dwayne Crowder. I am the executive director of an organization here in College Park, it's called Division for Hope. At Division for Hope, we focus on disparities within the community. It's a free STI HIV prevention clinic, along with hop, free housing for the underserved community. And I'm also the owner of Best Friends Restaurant and Bar, which is the only LGBT restaurant and bar in College Park.
And now we move on to all of the great human resources that we have within the City of College Park. Are we doing the All-Star first, or are we introducing new employees?
New employees first.
Okay, and then we get to the All-Stars.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I am here to recognize and introduce the new employees for the month of May. If you are a new employee hired within the month of May, we, I think we have some here from June as well. May and June, would you please come forward, state your name, your position, and which department you represent. All new employees hired in the month of May and June.
Leah Fisher, Assistant Camp Director.
Lakeisha Mitchell, Camp Counselor at Conlee.
Melanie Hughes, Gymnastics Instructor at Conlee for Tumbleweeds.
Hi, my name is Mariama Jordan, and I am a gymnastics instructor at College Park Tumbleweeds.
Hi, my name is Jada Character, and I am a gymnastics instructor at Conlee Recreation Center.
My name is Osset Monbelly, I'm a gymnastics instructor at Conlee Recreation Center.
Hi, my name is Amaya Cooper, I'm a gymnastics instructor at College Park Tumbleweeds.
Hi, my name is Bryce Humphrey, I'm a gymnastics, gymnastics instructor at College Park Tumbleweeds.
Hi, my name is Elise Cleckley, and I am a gymnastics instructor at College Park Tumbleweeds.
Hello, my name is Joshua Norangelo, I'm a Systems Analyst in the IT Department.
Hello, my name is Perry Lennon, and I am the Director of Conlee Summer Camp here at College Park.
Hello, my name is Deja Darisaw, and I am the Camp Counselor here at Conlee Rec Center.
Hello, I'm Jatia Ellis, and I'm employed with College Park Police Department.
Hello, I'm LaShanta Lust, and I'm here as College Park Police Department.
Hello, my name is Azariah Smith, and I'm Camp Counselor at Conlee Recreation Center.
Hi, I'm Monika Noel, I'm a Camp Counselor at Conlee Record Center as well.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie Austin, I'm a Summer Camp Counselor here at Conlee Rec Center.
Greetings, my name is Shanta Wilson, and I am a Custodian at the Conlee Rec Center.
Hello, my name is Rashada Sun, and I'm a Custodian at the Conlee Rec Center.
Good evening, my name is Kisha Gilmore, I'm the Camp Director at Tracy Wyatt Center.
Hello, my name is Kevin Wright, and I am the Assistant Director at Tracy Wyatt Recreation Center.
Good evening, Hakim Clark, I am the Assistant Director at Brady. We are also thankful for the continued support from the Mayor and City Council. Would everybody please give a round of applause for everyone coming out today?
I'm Chandra Ovining, I'm the Counselor at Brady Center.
I am Basal Aplish, I'm a Camp Volensiu Konser at Conlee Center.
I am Marcus Robinson, Chief Building Official for the, for the city.
I'm Emmanuel Adediran, Director for Public Works.
I'm Emmanuel Adediran, Director for Public Works.
All right, I'm also here to present the All-Star of the Month for the month of May 2023. The city hired this employee in May of 2022. This employee goes beyond the position they were hired for and extends themselves to assist in all other city departments as needed. You can count on this employee to fill the void in many areas administratively. This employee's work ethic is exceptional, and the employee displays service by ensuring that all areas are covered so that our citizens, business owners, and visitors of College Park's Business Affairs are promptly addressed professionally. Proud to announce the All-Star of the Month for 2023, the month of May, is Ms. Quinny Brown, Deputy City Clerk, Office of the City Clerk. Would you like to share a few words?
I can't be dramatic per Dr. Baker's words. I would like to thank everyone here at the City of College Park as well as staff. You guys have been amazing this year, especially to Ms. Ames and the City Clerk team as well as business license. Thank you, and also for those watching, we are still accepting applications for the youth council. So if you want your kid to go to DC next year with us and our lovely City Council, please apply at City Clerk's office. Thank you.
I have to say selfishly, the All-Stars are just one of my favorites. It's okay. Mr. Curry, you need a moment? Mr. Curry, are you good? All right. We will move on to remarks of citizens. Ms. Ames, can you let everyone know the parameters?
Yes, ma'am. You had the opportunity to sign in at 11:00 PM to leave citizens' remarks by 7:00. If you did not get a chance to sign in, you can come up if there's still time on the clock here to speak for three minutes. The first person I've had to sign in is James Walker to discuss Barrett Park.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. Thank you for this opportunity. I am a longtime resident, born and raised East Pointe, College Park, grew up, children went to Woodward, parents live in East Pointe, homegrown, live at 2071 Rugby Avenue, right by the park. My wife and I moved here in 2017.
Great, great, I'm sorry, could you speak a little closer to the mic, please?
Yes, sir. How is that?
That's good.
Great, wonderful. Moved back in 2017, pleasantly surprised regarding the neighborhood. However, the deterioration of the park is a paramount concern to me. What happened yesterday was appalling on several levels. It was not until I put something out on the Facebook post, the historic College Park, to let everyone know what was going on, and the response was overwhelming. Yesterday, I witnessed some vehicles driving into the park, parking on the park by a pavilion, as if this were some kind of car show. I then proceeded to notify 911. They sent out a police officer. It took him about maybe eight, 10 minutes to come. He came, spoke to me on the deck, waved, said, "I don't know what's their problem." I said, "Well, that's why you're here to find out." Walked up about five or six steps, waved his hand to the people, and left. Got back in his car, sat there for 30 seconds, drove off with nothing being done. I sat there in amazement, looking at him, hoping he would come back. Negative. I then proceeded to sit there and continue to film what I was awful. He did not come back until it was, until I had to make a second call to 911 to get him to come back. When I called the dispatcher, she indicated that this lieutenant, which he was not a lieutenant, was coming back. Came back out there about another eight minutes and proceeded to walk up to them, and at this point had a citation book, walked up, no citations were issued, all right? And then he proceeded to leave, and the vehicles drove and parked where they were supposed to park. Now, this is troubling on a few fronts, and I'm going to try to be quick here. One, I should not have to call the police twice to come out and do something that I should have done the first time. Secondly, we should have park monitors and people patrolling the park. When I did come here, we had police officers on foot, walking around, driving around. We had park monitors, none of which has happened since maybe 2021. I believe we paid enough tax dollars to get these services. So on top of that, the music was loud, it was disruptive to everybody, and the park has gone down. So is that my time?
That is your time.
I will leave that at that, but I offered my services to Mr. Hawthorne, and I did speak to the Chief of Police.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Jamel McKenzie to discuss electric utilities.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. Jamel McKenzie, of course, 2447 Odell Way, and I want to ditto what Mr. Walker has already said. I did drive by the park as well to see what was going on, and we've got to really remedy that situation. I am here to speak today to actually ask my Mayor and Council that you would vote in favor of the reduction of the utility rates for the summer. I think that this is a wonderful thing that we can do, a great gesture towards our citizens. We all know that the rates, we tend to use more electricity during the summer months, and we have soaring electric bills over the past few years. I've been able to assist several hundreds of families within this area that have struggled to pay those bills, and senior citizens. So I'm really happy to see that we are going to do this, especially since I watched the earlier part of the meeting and saw that we do have a pretty high rate, so this would make us commensurate with other cities of our size and actually help us, to help our residents. I also want to shout out to our City Manager and say thank you, Mr. Hawthorne. It was a pleasure to read the agenda, the new agenda that was put out for this particular meeting. I love the way that you are putting things together so they make sense with the strategic connections, showing us with each agenda item what each of these things mean in terms of recommendation, background, resource impact, and even with this, what I'm talking about with the utility rate. So I want to thank you for what you bring to our city and even helping us to make things a little bit more relevant for us and simplify. So thank you all, I'm counting on you all, thank you for what you do. I know that it is a thankless job, and that's why when I come up, I say thank you, thank you for your service. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Ms. Ames?
Next, I have Dwayne Crowder to discuss proclamation.
Oh, okay.
Next, I have Julian Nahalmeis.
Let's see, what's the topic?
Okay, moving on to Marla Jones to discuss business license. Okay, Jonathan Benito, business license.
Hello, Council Members. Jonathan Benader, I'm here on behalf of the Princeton Village Community Association, and there's on the agenda a request for a hearing on a conditional use permit for a home located within the Princeton Village subdivision. The applicant is Marla Jones and Andre Jones, and I'm here on behalf of the association. I just wanted to say that we were able to work out separate conditions between the applicant and the association regarding, you know, how that business would be operated, and we're here to speak in favor of the application.
Thank you.
Next, I have Joshua Mahoney to discuss repelling zoning of 2501 Roosevelt.
We have public hearings on these items. So you'll have an opportunity to speak on that particular issue in just a moment. Oh, no one changed it?
There was some question of whether it was to set it or hold.
There was a lot of people talking at once.
Will this matter be voted on this evening?
Give me one moment. Mr. City Manager, when we dealt with amendments to the agenda, no one brought this one up. So right now, it is still set as a request to set the hearing date on July 17th.
Mayor, I wasn't clear on how you wanted to address it. I knew we had the set public hearing, and Ms. Rambo actually came up, and I told her that you would handle it at that time, so I apologize for the confusion.
All right. Are there any additional amendments to the agenda?
I think we need to, we talked about modifying that public hearing, and we, I think we talked to City Attorney to see if we could legally modify it to a vote this evening, is that right?
Yes, sir.
I understand that we can if it's our pleasure. I'm fine with it. If we can legally do it, it'll save us some time. I'd motion that we modify that to, I guess, to consideration of the item itself.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay. All those in favor?
I, whoa, 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 I have discussion on the motion, please.
The motion was to have the public hearing for Item 6B this evening?
Yes, and I have a question and discussion on the motion.
Go ahead, Councilman Clay.
So, City Manager, normally, we set the public hearing and then several weeks ahead, giving time for adequate public notice. In this particular case, we haven't set the public hearing in advance, but we did give notice through, what was the Planning Commission, I think, reviewed it, is that correct?
Councilman Clay, just to clarify, there are those legal requirements for the public hearing that have been met, including the advertising, and I believe that would have been set for both the Planning and Zoning Commission public hearing that was previously scheduled, and this evening would have been for the City Council public hearing. That's the legal side of it. You have a traditional practice of the City Council, I think at your request from some time ago, maybe years ago, wanting to actually set the public hearing before the advertisement. Ms. Angela Rambo has explained in written correspondence that it was an oversight, that she didn't give the City Council that opportunity.
Right.
But you have met the legal requirement.
So it's not legally required, that's where my question is. It is not legally required for us to set the public hearing in council meeting and then follow it up several weeks later with the actual public hearing, is that correct?
If I may, Madam Mayor, you're correct, Councilman Clay. We have by tradition had a two-part process where it comes before, after it goes through the lower level at the Planning Commission, we bring it to Mayor and Council to set a public hearing, and then we separately conduct that public hearing. But we're governed by the zoning procedures law, state law, which requires us to advertise and give the public adequate notice. There is no requirement in the zoning procedures law that we have an agenda item where we set a public hearing. We're only required to meet the advertising requirements and notice requirements to the public under the zoning procedures law. We've met those standards, so while we may deviate from our practice of setting a public hearing as an agenda item at a separate meeting, that is just our tradition and practice that is certainly not legally required, and we have complied with the law in terms of giving the public adequate notice of a hearing this evening.
Okay, so that's why I asked the question. I wanted to make sure that we were legal, but I do have a second follow-on then to that. I personally think it's a good idea to have a two-step process where we set the public hearing, and I'm not applying to this case, given this situation, I don't have a problem with it, because I think what we read in the material was that notice was given, it was advertised, the signs were up, and what have you. So the public actually had adequate notice about it. But going forward, is it our intent then to abolish this policy of setting the public hearing and then having the hearing a couple weeks later? And the reason I ask that question is because I think it's a good thing to do. It may not be legally required, but by our policy, I think it's a good thing to do. And I'd like to clarify, before we give wrong impression to the folks in TV land, whether we're going to change our policy now, because again, I have no problem with it for this particular item, but going forward, are we going to abolish our policy, or are we going to do it in two stages?
May I make a suggestion that we have a broader discussion about that particular point during the City Manager's report?
Sure.
And just so, because we are technically in the...
I'm good, I just wanted to keep us out of legal trouble.
Right, right.
Mayor, I'm glad we are going to have that conversation because we do need that direction, but I need to complicate it just a little bit further. This whole discussion started with Item 6B.
Correct.
But 6A is a similar situation. So I think the motion that is on the floor addresses 6B, but it doesn't address 6A. So at least for this meeting, our question would be, do you want to at least be consistent with the two items that are on the agenda?
Mr. Hawthorne, was notice posted for tonight's meeting in that same manner?
Yes.
For 6A?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Okay, all right. Um, given that, is, um, who was the original mover? I'm sorry.
It was Councilman Karn and Councilman Basit.
All right. Councilman Karn, do you wish to modify your motion?
I got some discussion as well. And, uh, you, you gotta be careful about these kind of things in terms of doing, doing things by the book. And we're not outside of the, 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 the legal constraints, but in terms of procedural, um, I guess the question is, do we want to modify the guidelines in our procedure like, 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 like we talked about? Um, one of the things I often hear sometimes about College Park is that there's a lot of red tape in terms of getting across the goal line for, for, for changes in businesses themselves. Now, the residential items and things like this, and, and you can co-mingle these things together. Some changes are from business professional to residential, C-one to C-three, so on and so forth, or whatever have you. But we want to be even-handed across the board. Um, uh, we, 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 we inadvertently, um, uh, gave the information to, to one party. I'm assuming this other outfit got the correct information and understands how we had normally done this. Uh, I had to put this on the city attorney because, uh, while there's nothing that would go outside of the boundaries of the law at the same time, you know, we opening up a can of worms, uh... Here, here's the thing. I want to see everyone get processed and taken care of as soon as possible where we can, you know, make a decision as fast as possible. The only issue is, you know, again, are we going to do it for everyone? Are we going to make changes where we even-hand it with everyone that wants a hearing? I would imagine everyone petitioning wants to be, uh, heard and approved as fast as possible. But at the same time, the residents that want to take their time and get the notice and get a chance to come up here and be heard. So, uh, yeah, uh, uh, that's a tough one.
Councilman, do you wish to amend your motion though? Because I, I think the broader, it is a valid broader discussion to have, but I, I want to be cognizant of the fact that we are in the middle of public comment. And, um, so six A and six B are situated similarly in that the, the notice that was posted said that public hearings were scheduled to happen tonight. Is that correct, Mr. Denmark?
No. Yes, no, that's my understanding.
And for I, both items six A and-
Set a public hearing.
No, not for, to be, the public hearing to be conducted tonight.
Uh, I beg your pardon. Six A says, "Set a public hearing date of July seventeen for conditional use for a two-type, a type-two home occupation to allow a bakery." And if we go to six B, uh, where is it?
Councilman Clay, they're both listed as requests to set hearing dates. But from what I'm, what I'm understanding from Mr. Denmark and from what Ms. Rambo has reported to Mr. Hawthorne is that both of these items were advertised to the public, therefore meeting our legal requirements for a public hearing for tonight's date. And so, they are similarly situated, so if we are, if we are dealing with six B tonight because it was advertised for tonight, six A has the same issue. So...
I guess, I guess the question is-
Mayor, I, the, 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 it's one thing to say advertised, but some people get their advertisement from what is posted on the city website for the council meeting. So, some people maybe hear it in a different way, but you, there are some people who might have come tonight had they not looked at the agenda on the city website and say, "Oh, that is the setting of the hearing. I don't have to go tonight. I have to go in about two weeks."
And it, and to that point, the sheet's back in the back. Do they say to set a hearing? So, somebody could come in to fill out a comment, that they wanted to make a comment, but they see that and say, "Oh, they're setting the hearing, so I don't need to make a citizen's comment tonight. I'll wait until..."
Okay. If I could throw just one, one wrinkle in, uh, when we advertise to the public through our legal organ and we go through that process, it's difficult not to then have the hearing. Because our practice and the convenience of the public profoundly important. I understand that. But we have gone through the legal process to advertise a public hearing for tonight. So, if we don't have a public hearing tonight, then we open ourselves up on the other side. We're saying, "Well, the city of College Park advertised a public hearing" and put the public on notice, legal public notice that there was going to be a public hearing tonight, and there was no public hearing tonight.
Okay, Winston, what is to prevent us tonight from having a public hearing on this matter as well as adding an agenda item for consideration?
Joe, you just extended.
We can do, what I'm saying.
We've done that.
Doing both tonight.
We've started a public hearing and then we've extended it to two weeks later as well.
Well, I'm not talking about two weeks later. If we can legally possibly approve something tonight, could we legally have a public hearing tonight and then have another agenda item for an up or down approval tonight?
Uh, I'm not sure I follow.
Okay. We advertise for a public hearing.
Yes, sir.
We could have a public hearing tonight, hear from the public, close the public hearing. We could also have an agenda item for a vote tonight as well. That way, we satisfy the standard of public hearing as advertised, and we can also legally vote tonight.
Yeah, I, I thought that was the plan anyway.
Right.
Right. And, and, and that's what we're, we're looking at. And I guess, uh, for, for the applicant, and I think this has some ramifications on into the future, and I want you all to understand this. Whoever the applicant is, it, obviously it's no fault on your, of your own. There was an oversight. And we want to accommodate everybody as best as we can, especially if the oversight was on our end in one way or another. The problem is, if we accommodate your oversight, we're upending the standards that we have for everybody else. And that therein lies the issue. Now, I understand a month's delay is a big delay in terms of business. You got deadlines, you got things that you're doing, you got plans and the whole nine.
No, no. Hold on, wait. I've, I've, I, hold on one second. Councilman Karn, go right ahead.
And, and I want to hear from you all when it's time, when it's time to comment. Uh, I guess my question is, I would rather not upend the regs for everyone else because of the oversight for this particular one situation if we don't have to. So, I guess my question would be, is there something else that we could do as a city or consider that would make it where you could eat that time delay? And I understand, you know, time is money. I, I get it, the whole nine. Everybody understands that. You're in business. Uh, but, 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 uh, we want to try to accommodate everybody, especially the businesses, but residents as well, obviously. Um, so I guess, is there any other remedy outside of doing this here right now? And the sec, I guess the next question is, Winston, what's to prevent us? We've got a bite-a-meeting on the eighth. Is that right?
I believe that's correct.
What's to stop us from having a special call meeting since we're having that one and, and taking a look at it then and taking a vote?
Have to advertise again.
Well, we've got, we would have three days.
Madam Mayor, Council, my, my advice and recommendation to you is to conduct the public hearing. I understand our, our process about having a, one meeting to set the public hearing, then the public hearing being conducted at another meeting. I know we've done that by tradition. I reemphasize that that is merely our tradition, not a legal requirement. And I would further encourage you to separate the issues of what we're doing tonight on the one hand versus what we're going to do going forward on the other. And I think we're kind of conflating those. And I would encourage you to focus on tonight solely. We have two items on the agenda that have been properly advertised to the public through our legal organ for public hearing tonight. And I think it would be problematic not to have a public hearing tonight. We're legally on all fours to do so, and we can still preserve our tradition of setting a public hearing at one meeting and conducting at another prospectively. We, we don't have to be all or nothing. We can do two different things. We can have the public hearing tonight on the items on the agenda and then preserve our tradition of setting and then conducting at different meetings going forward. That is my advice and recommendation to you.
And so, that, that allows us to, we can have a more robust discussion during the city attorney's report. So, there is a motion on the floor for, um, item six B, uh, to be changed to a public hearing as opposed to the request to set a hearing date as it, as it reads on the agenda that the public hearing would take place this evening. Councilman Karn, do you wish to amend your motion to include six A and six B?
Yes.
All right. Councilman Gay, would you second that?
Second.
All right. So, now the motion stands that we are going to have public hearings tonight on items six A and six B. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes unanimously. Sir, just sit tight.
Yeah, in that case, I'll save my comments for public hearing day.
Thank you. Ms. Ames, anyone else?
Yes, ma'am. Miranda Nixon. All right, moving on to my email comments. Okay, first comment I have is from Alicia Wood. And it reads, "To whom it may concern, as a local resident of Ward One, I'm writing this letter to express my support for the new Tsunami volleyball training facility to be constructed next to Phillips Park. I believe that this new facility will create remarkable changes in our community. The dedicated staff and volunteers make Tsunami volleyball a fun, family-friendly place that provides amazing opportunities for young adolescents. Many of our families spend hours in the gym, some with our young children in tow, so the location being next to Phillips Park will bring many of our families out, out of the training facility to enjoy the wonderful outdoor space that Phillips Park has to offer. With the long hours spent at the training facility and tournaments being hosted, you will find the location will bring an added revenue stream to our local hotels and restaurants. This is an exciting opportunity for our community and I look forward to seeing, seeing it come to fruition. Sincerely, Alicia Wood." My next comment is from Catherine Wilkins, and it reads, "Hello, Council. Our family has been with Tsunami volleyball for almost eight years. A vote yes will benefit our community and those of us whose children have greatly benefited from the program. The club is one of the most diverse in Georgia, which makes it very special. As a three-zero-three-three-seven resident, we hope you vote yes. Thanks, Catherine Wilkins." My next comment is from Demetrius Taylor. And it reads, "Greetings, all elected officials. I am Demetrius Taylor, fifteen-year resident of the Embarcadero Club apartment. I am concerned with the safety of our, of our citizens and authorities as we travel through our fair city. I'm hoping that our public works department has budgeted the materials needed to re-stride our streets. West Point and a few others are in need of pronounced yellow lines so people can definitively understand how to navigate the roads. The intersection of Best Row and T.O. and Smith needs trimming so cars are able to see oncoming traffic. It would be nice if a large traffic mirror was there for added clarity and vision. I'm also concerned about the laws on Sylvan Road. Are we responsible for the grass trimmings up to, up to the hotel fence line or not? Because we never have seen the grass trimmed lately. It's only half cut. I have not heard from either Council regarding Camp Truitt. I brought this up a few months ago as to how we are going to move forward and hopefully reintroduce this project to the commissioners' board correctly. I was told that if the citizens and our elected officials write a letter to the Commissioner Marvin Erickson Jr., we could get the talk started again. What has Council done to save Camp Truitt from the debacle we experienced a while ago? Thank you for your time and careful consideration, Demetrius Taylor." My next comment is from Sherri Godfrey, and it reads, "Good evening, Councilmen. Lately, there's an increased tolerance for rogue drivers speeding and disregarding traffic signs on rocky and loud avenues. We are thankful for additional speed humps in some areas of Ward One, but with such spread-out placement, the speed humps have limited effect on traffic livelihoods. I'm sure you all have noticed increased aggression on Atlanta highways, and sadly, you see the same aggressive driving in our residential streets. The reckless drivers who speed through our community create nuisance in neighborhood and likely not res, and are likely not residents. So, they give no thought to our safety concerns, rights to recreation in our community. This email is in an effort to communicate our concerns to elected officials and city personnel in order to expect change and improvement. We've seen drivers at a top-speed race through multiple security stop signs on loud avenues, only to temporarily pause at the speed humps. The nature of loud and rocky avenues, straight and wide intersections between Main Street and Washington Avenue encourages speeding. Speed humps are just one tool who uses slow-speed violators. But there are more, many more traffic heightened quieting needs, options available as roundabouts, wider sidewalks, medians, et cetera, that would use in combination effectively force people to slow down. These measures would make our community safer and more hospitable for residents and visitors alike. We ask you, our city leaders, to consider implementing some of the many options available to deter speeders from barreling through our neighborhoods and thoroughfares. As a resident, it is up to us to use public forms and our political leverage to preserve the tone and tranquility of our community. Has the city conducted any traffic studies recently to capture changes in traffic and driving behavior in residential areas? Hopefully, city leaders will prioritize these concerns and consider suggestions as we are prepared to persistently insist implementation of more measures to curb tough speeding traffic. Best regards, Randy and Sherri Godfrey." Can I have some other comments?
If anyone wishes to speak for three minutes and they didn't sign up, they can approach at this time.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'd like to thank you, um, for the proclamation of today. We appreciate it, uh, the track team and the kids and the parents and the coaching staff. Also, I'd like to thank Michelle Johnson, Culture Arts and Recreation, Tanya Kirkland-Lance. Has, helped us really impact, like, as you read earlier, a hundred and thirty-some athletes. So, that's what, three to, three hundred, um, parents and many more grandparents. So, thank you for your support to make a difference for us to travel to Augusta and for the kids to have a, an enjoyment. Even though it's in, just in Georgia, they think it's a field trip going to New Orleans, uh, Texas, so it's a big deal for the city to continue supporting, uh, the rec department. Michelle is a great caregiver of the kids, as I say, and I really appreciate her and what she does for the track program and all the programs. But she always smiling and supportive, so I really appreciate it. Uh, I did not say this last time I was up here, um, Mercedes, Mercedes Miller, Mercedes Miller. Thank you for your support every year when we in the cold and coming out. We really appreciate your support over the years. Uh, Chief, thank you. The other day, we had an issue at the track. Uh, called you. You got someone out there immediately, so I want to say thank you. And I want to say this very clear. Uh, many years ago, when Keith was here as the chief, I got threatened, someone at the track threatened to kill me and to shoot me there. So, it's very serious when we call and call someone out there for the police to respond. And by coming here, Ambrose, you was on council, Joel was on council, Council Gay was on council, uh, and Tracy, you all voted unanimously to close down the track from six to seven-thirty, uh, so we wouldn't have that issue, and we haven't. So, I do appreciate you all doing that many years ago. And so, thank you. And we, uh, appreciate what you do do. Um, Sabrina, if you have something?
I just want to say, um, thank you. Um, I tell you, the families this year, uh- I tell you, the families this year, I don't know if it's just after COVID or whatever, but they have just been so, so excited. And the kids have just grown and have thrived, you know, from the track and field program. So thank you all for all that you all do to support College Park Favor Track Team.
Thank you. Someone else wish to speak? Oh, Mr. Evans, you faked me out. I thought you were coming down the center. All right. It doesn't appear that anyone else wishes to speak, so we'll move on to public hearings. The first is to, for a conditional use permit at thirty-six sixty-three Madison Street for a type-two home occupation bakery. Good evening, Ms. Rambo.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. As stated, we have a conditional use permit before you this evening for a type-two home occupation in order to operate a bakery located at twenty-one sixty-five Rugby. I'm sorry.
Thirty-six sixty-three Madison?
Thirty-six sixty-three, yes, thank you. The subject property is currently zoned PD, planned development, and is used as a single-family residence. It is approximately point one acres and is bordered by Temple and Princeton avenues and is less than a quarter mile from I- eighty-five. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit, as we stated before. As stated in its application, there should not be any increase in traffic congestion to the area as the applicant will be making all business deliveries himself. Additionally, there will be temporary, this will be a temporary operation at this residence until the applicant is able to transition to a commercial location. The zoning ordinance states several criteria that the council can use in deciding whether or not to approve the CUP, and I will go through those briefly. Whether the proposed amendment would be consistent with or compatible with the city's land use and development plans, goals and objectives. Staff feels that it would. The future land use map is medium density, I'm sorry, the land use map is medium density residential and medium destiny residential were created as to allow for slight expansion opportunities to create home occupations in the area. Whether the proposed amendment would increase or decrease traffic, safety and congestion, the conditional use permit should have no effect to traffic, safety or congestion in the area. Whether the proposed amendment would increase or decrease safety or have no relation to safety from fire, panic or other danger, there will be no impact in terms of fire, safety or other danger. The applicant will have to meet all necessary fire safety codes in order to be licensed by the state. Would the proposed amendment tend to promote or diminish influence on the public health and general welfare? The proposed CUP should have no influence on public health and welfare. Would the proposed amendment increase or decrease influence on provision of adequate light and air? The proposed CUP should have no restrictions on light and air from reaching surrounding properties. There's no changes will be made to the exterior of the house. Should there, if this amendment is approved, would it cause, prevent or have any influence on overcrowding of land? Again, this is an existing single-family residence, no changes will be made, so there should be no effect on in terms of overcrowding. Would the proposed amendment tend to cause, prevent or have any relation to undue concentration or undue scattering of population? Once again, there should be no effect in those terms. Would the proposed amendment tend to impede, facilitate or have no impact on the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewerage and/or public service facilities? Water and sewer are existing, and so there should be no other impact on these and transportation or other public facilities. Would the proposed amendment be compatible with or incompatible with environmental conditions and surrounding development? The proposed conditional use permit should be compatible with environmental conditions and the surrounding development. Nothing about the proposed use would cause the surrounding areas to diminish in value, use or enjoyment of the surrounding properties as because there will be no impact, there will be no additional traffic coming in and out of the home. Would the proposed amendment tend to require only reasonable expenditures of public funds? There should be no additional expenditure of public funds because of this CUP. Would the proposed amendment tend to promote or diminish or have no influence upon the aesthetic effect of existing or future uses? Once again, no changes are planned to the exterior of the home, so there should be no effect on the aesthetics of existing or future uses. Whether the proposed amendment should be a detriment to the value of the adjacent property, the approval of the conditional use permit should not be a deterrent to the values of any of the adjacent properties. And last, would the proposed amendment create an isolated district unrelated to adjacent and nearby districts? There's no proposed change to the zoning that will remain as it is. So there, it would not create an isolated district. The planning commission did meet and hear this proposal and they did recommend approval. And staff recommends approval with conditions. I'm sorry, approval, no additional conditions. And that concludes the staff presentation. I'll be happy to take any questions.
Why don't we go ahead and do the public hearing and then we can ask questions after all of that is done? And so at this time, I will declare the public hearing open and anyone who wishes to speak on this matter may approach and do so. Alrighty then. Public hearing is closed. We'll start with questions for Councilman Clay.
Well, I have no real questions. I was wondering how the neighbors felt about it and I see that we had the homeowners association speak in favor of it earlier. So, or was going to speak in favor of it. If they're fine, I'm fine. Good.
Councilman Carr?
I think it's always a good idea when a home-based business can come in and open up shop without disrupting your neighbors. We want to be the type of city where someone feels like they can move into the city and without a whole lot of issues, as long as it's not a disruptive kind of a enterprise. So, yeah, I'm all for it.
Councilman Allen?
The only question I have is, are they going to be employing any people there in the home?
It's my understanding that it's a partnership between the mother, who is the homeownership, and her son.
Okay. No, that's the only question I have.
Councilman Gay?
I don't have any questions. I was curious, do you know what they're baking?
From what I've heard, it sounds good.
It's a good question.
All right. Is there a motion?
I still move.
Thank you, Councilman Allen.
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous. The next public hearing is a rezoning from R-one to C-two at twenty-five oh one Roosevelt Highway. And Mr. Denmark, are we legally required to walk through all of those questions?
You're not legally required to do so.
Okay, I mean, they're in the packet. So if you, if you want to sort of give us an overview and then get to the recommendation, unless someone on the body wants Ms. Rambo to go through each of the questions. Okay, great.
Excellent. So again, as stated, we are here for a rezoning at twenty-five oh one Roosevelt Highway from R-one to C-two. The applicant is proposing to build in two phases, physical fitness facility and a community center with outside basketball courts. The subject property is currently zoned R-one, low destiny residential and is vacant. It is approximately four point three acres and fronts Herschel Road and Roosevelt Highway. The applicant proposes a community center, physical fitness facility, as stated earlier. Phase one would include outdoor basketball courts to be used for recreation and community events. Phase two would include an indoor physical fitness facility, a community center, which would include indoor basketball courts, offices and an open courtyard with a stage for events. The applicant states that the site will be accessed only via Roosevelt Highway with no access to Herschel Road. You have the criteria and staff comments in your packets for the, as stated, as required in the zoning ordinance. To move on, this was heard by the planning commission. They did approve, they did recommend approval and staff recommends approval with conditions, and I will go through those conditions. In order to provide a safe environment for the community recommendation of phase one, the development should include paved, striped parking, adequate lighting and security cameras, controlled access via a fence and gate, water and restroom facilities, trash receptacles, a twenty-four-hour on-call contact person registered with the appropriate city departments and a plan for maintenance of the restroom facilities and grounds. That concludes the staff presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Rambo. At this time, we will, well, I will declare the public hearing open. Those who wish to speak on this matter can approach at this time. And thank you for your patience, sir.
Of course. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I hope you're doing well this evening. My name is Josh Mahoney and I'm an attorney at Battle Law PC. For the record, we're located at three five six two Haber Shem in Northlake in Tucker, Georgia. I'm here this evening representing Mr. Bob Tesler, who owns property at two four five nine Roosevelt Highway, which is an office park that actually immediately abuts the property we're discussing this evening. So council members, I appeared on behalf of my client at the planning commission hearing just a few weeks ago. And at the time, I didn't appear in opposition or in support of this matter, simply because we didn't have enough information. My client, they found out about this rezoning and they briefly reviewed the site plan that was in the application and didn't feel that there was enough detail shown for them to really make a decision. They liked the idea of the basketball courts and in this being used as a community space, but they're not sure how it's going to impact their property. And so they reached out to me and my firm to see if we could help. So I attended the public, the planning commission meeting and I made those statements. The planning commission voted to approve, but asked that we meet with the applicant in order to voice our concerns. And so shortly after the planning commission meeting, we were able to establish contact with the applicant and have a meeting via Zoom to discuss some concerns. Specifically, we discussed parking, noise and stormwater runoff. And in my opinion, the conversation was very cordial. It was friendly and cooperative. And so to that end, I drafted up some zoning conditions that would kind of solidify or crystallize the essence of the conversation that we had that day. I actually was able to get those drafted up and sent out to Director Rambo, as well as you, Councilman Carr. Since this is in your district, I sent them to you as well. Unfortunately, as of today, we haven't come to an agreement on the conditions. When I drafted them, we were looking for a privacy fence, some screening via trees along the property line, as well as a way to share information between my client and the applicant when it comes to stormwater runoff plans later in the process. We would just like a chance to review and comment on those. I unfortunately was only able to send out the conditions that I drafted to you, Councilman Carr, earlier today because, as was stated earlier, there was a bit of confusion as to when this hearing would be. I was originally told it would be July seventeenth and I found out on Friday that it would be this evening. So I worked over the weekend to get those done and sent out to you all so I could be here this evening to speak on it. I hope you, I hope you got it and were able to review. It's a bit more extensive than what I, than what I was able to describe to you this evening in the short time I have, but the essence is screening, trees, fence and stormwater.
Sir, you don't have a three-minute limit for public hearing?
I'm almost done anyways.
Okay.
So unfortunately, at this time, because we haven't come to an agreement with the applicant on the zoning conditions, I cannot speak in favor of this application. I can't call for approval. Rather, I would call that you table this matter to a later hearing date to give the applicant and I more time to work out zoning conditions and come to, come to an agreement that will allow this development to move forward, but also help to mitigate the impact that would have on my client's property. And I would add at this time that I think this would also help with the confusion earlier. It would, in effect, hold you to the two-meeting process that you've been doing, but also we can still have the public hearing tonight as we're doing now and then have another one where you can vote. So that would kind of at least help, help me and maybe, maybe solve that problem as well. However, should you decide to approve this application, I would ask that you do so with the zoning conditions that I sent over today. But with that, I thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilman Clay?
Yes. My major question is whether the applicant understands the situation with aircraft noise at this point. This location is one point four miles from the end of runway nine R, which is a landing runway, which means that planes come in on a three-degree glide slope and are relatively close to the ground. And it's about nine hundred feet from the arrival glide path of the planes landing to the east there. So it's, it's offset by about nine hundred feet or about maybe a couple of city blocks. It is also about fifteen hundred feet away from the departure flight path for planes departing on runway twenty-seven R and turning to the southwest. So my concern, not my word, and I defer to Councilman Carr. My concerns are first, the first phase is outside. So anybody participating outside is going to be during a push, and we have several of those during the day, one plane after another after another taking off, probably at sixty-second intervals. And similarly, when their wind is from the east, they will be landing, one plane after another, probably, say, sixty seconds again. It varies. They're going to be exposed to that noise. The second issue is that...
Councilman Clay? I apologize for the interruption. I, I really wanted to see if there were any questions for this gentleman before he sat down.
Well, my question for this gentleman is, does your client understand or you're working, you're working out the deal with?
I'm not the applicant. I'm here on behalf of a neighbor.
Right. And I thought you meant questions for...
And that's, that's on me. I apologize, I was not clear.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure that there were, if there were any questions for him before he sat down.
You haven't thumped your gavel yet, so it's still a public hearing. My questions will follow.
Okay. But just any questions before he sits down?
I have a question, I have a question. So I was listening to some of the objections that you have shared with the applicant. I don't imagine, are you familiar with the property?
With the, with the applicant's property?
Yes.
I, I mean, I've looked at it on a map. I see that it's a wooded property and it's immediately adjacent to my client's and it double fronts on Herschel and Roosevelt.
So just, so just as a little background, I've been looking at the property since nineteen ninety-eight. In terms of stormwater runoff, actually, your property is impacting that property. If anything, there may be some considerable cost for you to mitigate your runoff. And trash. I've been to that property. The cowards are bigger than you and I from the rats that they eat. Thirdly, your rents at that property, you got people with less than 100 square foot paying astronomical rents. So while I appreciate Mr. Tesler's concern, he needs to appreciate our community. That's my comment.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
If I, if I could speak to the stormwater issue?
The stormwater, sure.
Sure. My client is only requesting that we be able to review and comment on the stormwater plans. They've actually spoken about cooperating with the applicant on a stormwater plan to make sure that the, the, the stormwater works both ways. And that was, that was, that was in the conditions that, that we sent out. That was condition three.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this matter?
I got a, just a couple of things.
Wait, oh, no, no, I meant anyone in the audience.
Oh, oh, sorry.
Mayor and the city council, I'm really excited to be here. I'm from California. I've recently relocated to, to Georgia, and I intend on doing some pretty interesting things in your city.
Sir, could you state your name?
Oh, my name is Mark Brown. I'm the, I'm, I am the, actually, the owner of the property and my partner is. Uh, Jeff, she's, she's over there. I, first of all, I, I really appreciate that you made an exception by, and took the advice of council to, to, um, to see this matter today because I have to admit, I was a bit confused by the process and, 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 and it would have caused undue hardship for me to have come, to come to California yet again for another meeting. So I, I want to first express my gratitude to both the mayor and, and the council for considering this matter. In, in, in terms of this, this, this basketball court and community center, I think it is, it, it is vitally important that we have this sort of thing in the community, not only because I came from the inner-city community, but, but I think that if you, if you look at the area, it is, it is begging for some attention. And, 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 and this community will only, not only do basketball, but it will, it will provide education, it will provide training in, in, in the media space, which I have over 20 years of experience in this area. And, and I believe it would provide, you know, quite a bit of encouragement for the community and, and as they like to say in, in, you know, from our ground, put College Park on the map. Not, not saying that it's not on the map, but it's... Now, I, to, to address the gentleman's question, the opposition, which he, he wasn't opposing it before, and, and, and it was not the recommendation of the committee to promote, for us to, uh, have a discussion with him about the, about, uh, uh, rezoning. But we did it anyways, in, in the interest of being a good neighbor and, and to have cordial relationships with, 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 with our neighbor. I, I'm, 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 I, I, they, we spoke and I said, I agree in principle to what you, we, what you're recommending. He's recommending a six-foot fence. I want an eight-foot fence, so we, that, that's his recommendation number one. So we're, we're, we're in agreement with that. He wanted two sets of trees planted at, at six foot to, to block visibility from our property to his property. I said, well, you know, I'm not sure if I want to be able to do that right now. We may do trees. We might, my, my, my designer might say, hey, we want ivy. That might be better. I don't want to be, I don't want to be tied to that. He then says, well, there's a parking recommendation and there's, there's also an issue of, 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 uh, uh, storm runoff. Well, all of those considerations would be, would be taken up once we apply for building, a building permit. I can't build a, a, a building on, 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 on that property without having gone through a number of city ordinances. So I said, listen, let it be subject to the, the existing ordinances. That's not good enough for them. They want, they want, they, they want it to be conditioned precedent to getting the C2. And I, and that doesn't make, I was unwilling to, to do that. But I, I, I still extend myself to them by saying, hey, we are approaching with open arms, even though we don't want to, don't have to, 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 to alleviate any concern that you might have about, uh, 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 run-ons or, 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 or visibility, or, 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 or shrubbery. But, but it, it, it strikes me, it strikes me a little disingenuous since behind our building, he, he, they, they cleared half acre of our property because they were having rad issues as, as Councilman Gay said. They didn't ask us anything. I'm not, I'm not pursuing them for that. They, they, the, the, the concrete, we have pictures of that. They just, just, it is dumped on our property. I am not even complaining about that. I'm a big boy. I can, I can deal with that. If, and if we're going to clear the property, I, I, I have no problems eating those costs. But it seems disingenuous for them to come here and, and then say, hey, we, we, we have this burden for the community when they, they are one of the biggest litters in the community. It's, 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 I'm, I'm amazed. But I, again, I'm, I'm willing to put all this aside. I just want to be, uh, uh, to, 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 to bring good business to College Park, and I think that this would be a good thing for College Park. Not just for Mark, because this is not about me. We, we, we have a number of black and brown children in that area that could benefit significantly from this community center. Now, I wanted to, I wanted to work with Six West to get, to, to, to get some, some property. But that process was so arduous, I said, you know what? Let me go into my own pocket and buy a piece of property. And that's what I did. My motives are, my motives are to have a center that can have an educational impact on our children and, and, and that can equip them for the future. That's, that's my goal. And I'm willing to entertain any questions if you have.
I'll hold on to questions for you because you are the applicant.
Yes.
But let me just...
Oh, okay, sure.
See if anyone else wishes to speak during public comment.
Greetings again, everyone. I'm Jamelle McKenzie. And I'm here to stand in favor of this project and, and hope that we do move forward with changing this, the zoning. When I look at this project and, and even what we have here in the agenda, it does support the quality of life objective for, under our strategic goals for our city. This particular organization, I have become familiar with them because they have, without even having their building or their facility built, they have automatically gotten involved in the community. And we have just, we, we actually did a project with them a few weeks ago, and they're, they're often volunteered to continue to help us with the things that we're doing for youth in the community. I like the fact that it is going to be an outdoor and an indoor facility. As, I guess, phase one is the outdoor, but it also gives us some community, some additional community event space. That's not necessarily city space, but it's pri, um, private sector space. And, um, you know, just the, the, the impact that this organization has. They, they, they have connections with athletes from all over the world. And so this would give an opportunity to our youth to be able to meet these persons such as this. So it's not just somebody you see on the TV, but somebody that not only have you been able to shake a hand, but to take a class. I'm also grateful for the educational space that's going to be provided. I think, I don't think that we can get too much of anything good that's going to help our community. So, um, I, I don't, I'm sure you all don't have any questions for me, but I'm just here in the public hearing as a citizen saying I support this and I'm hoping that this is something that our city will choose to move forward with.
Thank you. Does anyone else wish to speak? All right. Hearing none others. I will declare the public hearing closed. We'll start with Councilman Clay.
Okay. Well, since the applicant was, was here and heard me start off, although I was addressing the other gentleman, I want you to be successful. I think it sounds like a great project, and I think it will be a real benefit to the community. What I want to make sure that you know is the issues with aircraft noise that you face in that location. And one of the concerns is with phase one, I already told you where the airplanes were. You heard me say that. I'm sure you were listening. You'll, you'll encounter a significant amount of noise on takeoff and landing, depending on whether the wind's blowing to the east or blowing to the west. I'm a little concerned about the fact that the first phase is outside, and so you're going to have to deal with that. Excuse me. And those who participate will have to deal with that. Second concern I have is that, I think you said you were going to have some audio/video capability there. Did you say that? Or did I miss that?
Yes, I did say that, yes.
Okay. The noise inside, unless you get, I, I strongly suggest, strongly suggest, because I want you to be successful. This is not a condition as far as I'm concerned or what have you, but it will impact your business. And that is that you need to get yourself a noise engineer involved in this project to make sure that the way you build the building, that you have a sufficient sound transfer coefficient to deaden the sound because you're going to have to deal with that inside. And particularly if you're trying to do anything with sound or acoustics or whatever, you know, and, and I know you're wearing hair, maybe wearing headphones when you're working with this, but it still will be a big distraction. The third thing I have is you talked about a courtyard. With aircraft noise and the frequencies that are involved, you can get what's called resonance. And in the corners of that courtyard, you may get effectively the sound being amplified. So that's another reason to get a noise engineer looking at it. And you might want to, it might impact the orientation of the courtyard a little bit, how you arrange the building. It might have to do with whether you put some sound-absorbing materials inside there to, to kill the reflections when they come off the walls of the building. And so my only question was, I asked Angela Rambo, whether you were aware of the potential impacts of the sound and, and of what it was in your location? Because depending on which way the wind's blowing, you could look at that location and it could be just fine at a certain time of the day. It all depends. So that's, my only motivation is to make you successful, and that's what's, what's behind the issue. Do you, do you understand it? And more importantly, I hope you'll, if you do understand it, you'll take action on it. That's all I had.
Councilman Clay, I, I appreciate your genuine concern. I, I, we have considered this. For certainly the, the, the second phase, we would build sound stages, which is, which is, you get, there's a sound consideration associated with that for, for any, uh, 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 media components. I was just there prior to coming to this meeting, and you were right. There are 2,700 planes going over our head, so it's, it's not a, a, a quiet place, all right? And in addition to that, we have to contend with the railway on, on Roosevelt that decides that they want to pass at any given time. Um, yes, we have considered those things and we will consult with, with a, 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 a sound engineer or some sound design to, to, to mitigate, uh, or absorb some of that, those sounds and... But again, um, growing up, I, I assure you, I played on the worst conditions than, than just sound.
Okay. Good luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilman Karn?
All right. Thanks for coming out. Yeah, we, we, obviously, we support our city businesses. We want more businesses coming into the city. But at the same time, we want to cover the businesses that are currently here as well. Uh, we want to be fair to everybody. And now, now, is this, is, uh, next, this is the executive office part? Is this where, uh, where J.R. Dino was for many years? You know what I'm talking about?
I'm not sure if J.R. Dino was in the executive office.
Okay. Yeah, Dino, I think he was the longest, he's been there, he was there since the seventies. He had what was called the million-dollar record pool there. And he was there for so many decades that he became the leasing manager of the, of the, of the actual park. Yeah, so it's a noisy area. It always has been. I think it always will be. I was going to add in CSX Rail, Railroad in, in addition to the noise. So it's always been a noisy area. So I understand your noise concerns. Probably before you became his attorney, um, I can remember with Gary, there were calls for noise there in terms of, there were a lot of studios there. And sometimes the, the church that had a couple of offices would complain, or the beauty shop complained about the music at the studios a few doors down. So, I mean, there've, there've been noise concerns there for decades, you know, so on and so forth. Uh, but it's just something that apparently y'all have dealt with over the years. If the two of you are going to be neighbors, I think y'all need to make sure you get along and work together. You may be surprised, you know, each of your developments may enhance each other's developments. You know, he may bring an, an audience there that may be interested in renting some office space where before they wouldn't have noticed or seen it. And at the same time, your office park could market that as a amenity perhaps. I mean, so, 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 so you never know. I appreciate your concerns and the things that you propose and the whole nine. We got a vehicle that covers that. Um, we have a board of zoning and appeals and who we task with working out the zoning requirements. So they set the standards and requirements, uh, and we appoint those people, you know, based, and, and we, and we count on their decisions. And they base their decisions on what's best for the neighborhood. And we count on them to do that. So we got that covered. Um, the only other question I had was, Angela, I'm assuming y'all covered any potential water, stormwater runoff issues with, with more impervious surface there? Um, on both sides, you got the furniture store and you got...
Um, I can't speak to the existing furniture store, but this new development is required by ordinance to handle all of the stormwater that is present on its site. Basically, none of the water on that site can leave that site.
Okay, so...
So in the process of LDP, they have to treat it.
Okay. So you, so you're going to, you know, the, after the standard, they're going to grade it in a way where it doesn't runoff into your neighbors?
They have to provide detention on their site.
All right. I think we're good. Y'all work together. I think y'all are going to be good neighbors.
Councilman Allen?
I think it's a great program. I think anytime you get kids involved and you could teach kids, that kids can learn, uh, it's a good thing. I mean, seeing the smiling faces of the kids here earlier and the joy they get out of track. I mean, you have a chance to change young kids' lives and, and to put them on the right track. So I applaud you for what you're doing. I think it, I think it's great. I know when I was young, basketball kept me out of a lot of trouble. So hopefully you can redirect some kids and, and keep them out of trouble. So again, I, I think it's a great, and I'm always favored.
Councilman Gay?
I'll just make a final comment. I didn't mean to be so hard on the applicant, but, um, there, there is a really large impervious surface with the business park, more than most parking lots. And so my, I would be seriously more concerned on how are you going to control the water to that new development? Because that wasn't built with retention. It was not built with retention. It actually flows on their lot. So that's a good conversation you might really have to have. The second thing I want to say is that we did a study, uh, several years ago when I sponsor a, a community center. In fact, in my office, there's a life-size, my back wall is a community center. Maybe, maybe you're going to fulfill our dream. But the point is, um, we did a study with, uh, that you should, it's a public study, and you all should get that study to just help understand how, how you can use it to have a more successful product. And I think you can get it from economic... product, and I think you can get it from economic development, they can give you a copy of that study, it was about a $10,000 study. And thirdly, if I'm not mistaken, I don't think it's called Roosevelt anymore, I think it's called Main Street, if I'm not mistaken. It's Main till you get to Herschel. You don't, I'm just telling you, it's called Main Street.
Thank you so much.
That's all I'm telling you, you're on Main Street.
Main Street.
All right, thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilman Carr, seconded by Councilman Gay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous, thank you, gentlemen. Item 6C is the second and final public hearing to receive comments on the proposed fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. I will declare the public hearing open. And since people are going in the opposite direction, I will declare the public hearing closed. All right, item seven, yep, 7A is the appointment of the Ward Four Planning Commission representative, Councilman Gay, who is your nominee?
My nominee, if she don't mind standing, and actually, she may want to give a couple words, is Ms. Tangi Warrior, come on down, Ms. Tangi. Tammy is vested in our community, she's involved in not just Ward Four, but in other communities, in other activities, so I appreciate you being diverse to work across the city, so we honored to have you, so Madam Clerk, it'd be Tangi Warrior for planning and zoning. Ms. Warrior, would you like to make a comment?
Sure. Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Evening.
My name is Tangi Warrior, and I am a resident of Ward Four, I'm at 4673 Windthorpe Drive. Thank you, Councilman Gay, for this opportunity, and I look forward to serving you well.
Thank you. And for the record, Whitney Flemster served for two terms, and Whitney cannot continue to serve to raise her son and to pursue her graduate studies, so we're again honored to have you.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Thank you, Councilman Carr, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Allen, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is unanimous. Congratulations, Ms. Warrior. Item 7B is to approve the consent agenda minus Petrie government relations, is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Councilman Allen, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Councilman Clay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen, that is also unanimous. Item 8A is consideration of Petrie government relations as the lobbyist moving for the next year.
Motion for denial.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
I am opposed as well, so that motion fails?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it with comment.
All right, go ahead, Councilman Clay.
Yeah, I, I had thought about abstaining on that motion, so I wanted it off the consent agenda as well. I think there were a lot of people that were involved, in fact, I think there might have been one or two people from council that were involved in the first misstep which occurred last year. And so while I was not in favor of what happened, and I do hold you guys responsible for it, I'm following up on what Councilman Carr said, you weren't alone. And I, based on that, I think you've done a good job for us in other areas, and I was going to abstain, to be honest with you, because just to indicate that I'm not totally satisfied, and I think it could have been done differently, and I think you were unduly, my personal opinion, and I don't want to debate it, it's just my opinion, I think you were personally influenced in what that was done, and presumably, you're wiser at this point. I think you've done a good job in getting, recovering from that, and I think you've had a lot of help, so I'm not, I'm not giving you a real atta boy, but I'm not ready to write you guys off, and I think you will continue to do a good job for the city, and that's why I am supporting the motion to renew your contract. Had it gone differently tonight, I might have just abstained.
Councilman Carr?
No comments.
Councilman Allen?
No comments.
Councilman Gay?
I don't want to comment, but I must. So I would say to that, I agree, there was a lot of fault to blame, particularly, if you're a lobbyist, and we create a bill that had as much conversation that that bill had, I don't understand how a lobbyist could not follow that bill. How does it go from this chamber to the legislative council, through all houses, and then to the governor with the lobbyists, not one time reading the bill? It could have been a bill to blow up the city. I don't understand how, and that to me, you know, I worked for 10 years at Airtran Airways, then it turned to Southwest, and they got people down there who worked double shifts just to make a living, sir. They don't get $70,000. They don't enjoy the luxury of $70,000, I don't think, maybe more than that, we may be paying more than that, but the point is, they worked there 20, 30 years, and they on a tug, it's 10 o'clock at night, right? And they tug, hit a plane, it don't even damage, it just scrapes it, but guess what? You're fired. You're fired. You're not fired because the organization is mean, you're fired, as to what the council member said, because the organization has to set a standard. And even if the bill was wrong, there is no way that my council members and my mayor should have denied that governor. There's no way. And you as a lobbyist who have to work on the dome, you should have stood up for the dome and the fellows that work at the dome and said, hey, we made a mistake, let me go back and talk to these colleagues, rather than deny our governor and deny those great people, regardless of if it was 65, regardless it was, however, we thought it was going to be, we should have let it roll the way it went, that's all I want to say. So I'm not mad at you, but you got scaved tonight.
On Wednesday, February 23rd, 2022, Mr. Bolia sent an email to two members of our staff, one of our city council members, and our city attorney, with a link to the bill as it was incorrect. We all dropped the ball. On the city side, on the legal side, on the lobbying side, I think there's a lot of blame to go around. In evaluating this decision, I think it serves to look at the totality of the services we've received, and we are one of the first cities in this state to be a recipient of the municipal option sales tax. That is huge. It is something that other cities are now trying to get and have that work through the legislature. I know Representative Blackman has considered giving all cities that option, but I don't know how that'll look for the second year of the session, but we have been at the forefront of some of those changes, in part to the service, in part due to the work that Mr. Franklin and Mr. Bolia have done on behalf of the City of College Park. This was a big screw-up, we can all agree with that. I don't think that the way to fix a screw-up is to then essentially pass a tax on the middle class of this community, because we've got seniors who live in $750,000 houses who can afford those taxes. This was targeted, and this body has said that its intention was to ensure that our seniors, our disabled folks who are right on the edge, have an opportunity to stay here, that we are supporting them being in this community, that if they are on the cusp of losing their homes because of tax issues, that we can provide them some relief. That was the intent the entire time, as we discussed this entire issue, and so the bill that the governor signed this year, that Ms. Ames, I believe you are aware of, and will be on our November ballot if this body sees fit, does that. It achieves the goals, the policy goals, that this body initially said they wanted. The process has been ugly, it has been messy, and I think that there is enough blame to go around. This was also something that occurred last year, and I was actually surprised that we were rehashing that when the team came up this year as well, but, all those in favor...
I have a comment before we vote, Mayor.
I've called for the vote, sir, we've all had an opportunity to, sir...
I think we spoke contemporaneously.
Sir, we have called for the vote, we've all had the opportunity to speak. All those in favor?
I'll take it up in my council minutes.
Yes, sir. All those in favor?
More about your comments you just said.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
I'm in favor. All right, moving on, we've got, sir...
I've got a point of order, excuse me. A few minutes ago, about 20 minutes ago, there was a vote, there was a motion made and a second. Councilmember Clay said he had comments after there was a motion and a second made. He was allowed to speak on his comments, same thing. If you run the tape back, you can watch it on video for yourselves. We talk about the disparity up here on council. We talk about two different sets of rules, based on which set of council members you happen to be. Folks, you just saw it live and in color, and if you rewind that tape back about 20 minutes, you'll see a motion and a second, and Councilman Clay had further comments. City manager, we want to conduct the business up here, we want to debate, we want to deliberate, I think that's a good thing ultimately. Sometimes it's messy, that's politics. I think we come to the best decisions when we deliberate and debate, but if there's two sets of rules for deliberation, and two sets of standards, it's going to make it kind of tricky for one set of council members to get their points across where there's a second set of council members that have no problem doing it. So, and I guess I put this on city attorney, city manager, 20 minutes ago, there was a motion and a second, he said he had comments, the mayor allowed him to say, speak his comments. The first meeting you had here, it was the same double standard. First meeting you had here, it was a budget session. After it was up, Ambrose had some questions about some of the things with the budget, Ken had some questions about the budget, the minute I started asking questions about the budget, I was stopped and told we can't ask questions until the presentation was over, but it didn't apply to these two council members. So how can you expect to have a fair and equitable meeting, or a fair meeting of any kind, if you're going by double standards and two sets of rules? And the only difference I can see with these four men up here is that two of us are men of color. So you're going to have to explain this to me, and, excuse me, I'm almost finished.
You're out of order.
Well, I think you're out of order as well.
Councilman, councilman.
I think you're out of order too.
Councilman.
Because you can't govern and manage a meeting with two different sets of rules and double standards for two different sets of people, based on the people you want to hear from and the people that you don't want to hear from.
Let me be clear.
Well, no, let me be clear, because I have the floor right now.
Councilman, I have, I'm the chair.
Well, you're the chair, but I have the floor.
Councilman, I'm the chair of this meeting, and let's discuss initially, Councilman Clay's request for a discussion after that motion.
After the second and the motion.
The second, the motion, the second, and then discussion is appropriate, and so that's why that occurred, and at this, after...
There was a motion and a second, and he had discussion.
Councilman, councilman, after everyone had the opportunity to discuss, everyone, everyone had the same equal opportunity to discuss, that's when I called for the vote on this one. This is, Robert's Rules of Order do not dictate everybody going back and forth to one another, and since this has turned disgustingly personal and racist...
I agree.
Let me be, let me be perfectly clear.
By you.
Let me be perfectly clear that the insinuation that I would have any animus or any issues with anyone, based upon their race or their gender, is outside of any poll, and I will tell you this, for the record, this is politics at its ugliest. There will be backdoor, like, back that way, folks slapping each other on their shoulders and saying, ah, it's just politics, it's just that. It's a show. It's a show to inflame people, to divide people, and it's disgusting, but what we will do, what we will do right now, is move to approve the adoption of the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We do not have a quorum. So we'll take a 10-minute break. So we'll take a 10-minute break. Good evening. We are back. Uh, we do not have a quorum to proceed, uh, at this time at 10:09 PM. Uh, Councilman Clay, did you want to make any comment?
I think this is the first for College Park. I think this is the first time we have had, uh, councilpeople walk out and, um, leave us with no quorum. We have some important business, like approving the budget tonight. Several other things. U. Richardson needs to order electrical components. I could cite several other items that are still on the agenda. I'm coming back in two weeks. I'm not coming back tomorrow at 3:00 AM or 3:00 PM for a special call meeting. I'm here. I'm here till, as long as I need to be here tonight. But it doesn't do me any good to be here, so I'm going to go home. But, uh, I'm sorry. I don't know what else to say. It, uh, this is a unique event. I, I guess I. No, I probably said enough. I'm going to pass it on.
Councilman Allen?
I was elected to serve, to serve the citizens. And that's what I'm doing. I'm, I'm here. I'm here to make decisions. I've read all the material. I think the decisions need to be made. Uh, there's a lot of very, very important decisions to be made, like our budget, that has to be made within a certain amount of time. Like Councilman Clay said, order supplies. I have an obligation to the employees and department heads that are still here. And, and here supporting our city. And I plan to be here, but, uh, since we don't have a council enough to have a meeting, I'll wait a while and then, then I'll go home. But I'm here to serve and that's what I'm doing. That's all I have.
Well, thank you, sir. If we can't get it done tonight, Cycle Gang doesn't get their, their, their permit approved for bike riding demo events at the depot. Tsunami can't get their quitclaim deed. And we still did not address the power reduction for our seniors. We haven't adopted our budget. We are here to get the work done. Personalities aside. This is a big disappointment because I think when this body does not operate with some level of unanimity, we can't get the people's work done. And there are a lot of people who are counting on us to get our work done. I have sat here for several years now. It is one of the greatest privileges of my life to serve in this capacity. And it is not always easy. And sometimes it can be absolutely rewarding and so very, very thrilling to see good work get done in this community. And our staff members who get to be a part of that know exactly what I'm talking about. When great things happen because we're all rowing in the same direction and things are getting done. But it also subs, it subjects you to a lot of criticism. And, and some of that being unfair. I've sat here for three and a half years and been told that somehow I was a traitor to my race. That I have it against black men. That because of the person that I have chosen to spend my life with, the person who's got my back at home and has been texting me to figure out if I'm okay. That somehow that means that I've got a problem with black men. My daddy was a black man. My grandfather, who was one of the first people to reintegrate professional football, who ran over people who stepped on his knuckles and spit at him and called him the N-word. That is who I come from. And every single day, I am proud of that. I am proud of my heritage. I am proud of my lineage. And what we do up here is try to make the best decisions for our entire city. Two weeks ago, we had to decide what we would do with the former McLaren High School that will service up to 400 children. Who are those children? Who are the children that we serve on the South Side? Those are babies that do look just like me. Little black boys, little black girls who deserve the same shot. And we have not given them the opportunity. We have turned our backs for a generation on a generation of our kids. But somehow we want to ignore that because big dollars want to walk through the door. When we have the opportunity to uplift our community. When we have the opportunity to do something different. We should take it. Great example is Booker T. Washington, the gentleman who has developed South Park cottages. Booker got a split vote from this council. And that was a tie-breaking vote. Why? Because he had an amazing plan to redevelop Godby Road as we know it. Because we know there's been a generation of disinvestment in that corridor. And we know that any child in this community, whether they are born on Godby Road or Rugby, should deserve the same chance. And that is what we are trying to do. Give kids opportunities. That is why there's a climbing wall in the Wyatt Rec Center. Because one of the very few climbers of color chose to put a wall here to make sure that our kids had access. So I ask your forgiveness in being a little bit emotional. But we are all trying to build the community that we deserve. And when I said it was disgusting before, I echo those sentiments now. It is disgusting how race and gender and all the other things that people wanna use to divide us. As a community, we have so much more in common, so much more in common. Don't be led by the people that want to divide us. We can achieve amazing things if we work together. And we're not pitting ward against ward or male against female or black against white. What if we all worked together? What if we actually got the things done that this community deserves? What would it look like then? We've got that opportunity. And I wanna say this about the two gentlemen that are sitting on this council right now. They are good men. They are honest men. And they do not deserve to be called racists. They make decisions in this community with the entire community in mind and do it with their heads and their hearts. And I thank you for your service, gentlemen. I thank you. Because it's not fair what you've been subjected to either, even if there is a conversation on the other side of the door that it's just politics. Because if you can say it in public, you should apologize in public. It's not fair. It's not fair that politics get in the way of good policy and that we seek to divide rather than unite. And I again appreciate your efforts and for being here, being here to do the work of the citizens of College Park. We are scheduled right now to come back in fourteen days. And during that time, we'll have to take up all of the things that we didn't take up tonight. I wish we could do your work. But we have no other choice. So I bid you a good evening and I'll see you in two weeks.